Good evening, I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Uh, Mrs. Crump.
Our student Reagan McCarthy was supposed to be here, is not here.
Oh, she is here, I did see her! I'm so sorry! I'm like, where is she?
Hi Reagan. Alright Reagan will lead us and the pledge will be done.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first I want to apologize because I didn't see you standing there. But Reagan McCarthy is a fourth grade student in Mrs. Haley's classroom, Mrs. Haley's right here. And she's described by her teacher as a fourth grader who embodies all of our media schools' characteristics of being a role model flyer. She enters our building each day with a smile and warm greeting to all staff and students. In the classroom, she is motivated to step and achieve her learning goals and she's always willing to help out here. Reagan is a natural leader of problem solvers. She's a member of our P D I S club, which meets after school a couple times a month. And they work on projects to promote our four commitments, which is to be respectful, be responsible, be ready to learn, and be safe. She's a wonderful, hardworking young lady. I can personally attest that Reagan's always cheerful and thoughtful. She often brings me cards for different holidays and celebrations. You might stop though after if it looks busy. She's always willing to come and cheer to help out and to do whatever she can to make our building a better place. We're very lucky to have Reagan as part of our student community. Congratulations. Tonight we'd also like to recognize one of our staff members. Um, Elizabeth, that's what we call her, Betty Pasturski. Um, do you want to tell me shit? Betty was hired as a special education aide a little over three years ago and has worked in a number of roles in the building since. She's worked as our self-contained, um, room aide. She's also been a personal carry. And most recently, she's helping out, um, in the front office as a clerk, a temporary clerk helping out in there as she goes back and forth as a personal carry. Even through all these ch- all of this change, she always shows up every day ready to do whatever is asked of her and always with a smile on her face. She's very dedicated to the students that she works with and she's a calming force for students, um, who need that civility during the day. She makes sure that students know that she really, truly sincerely cares about them. Betty actively looks for ways in the building to pitch in and make things better, no matter if it's in the office, if it's in the cafeteria, if it's in the classroom. Her even keeled demeanor and her kindness towards students, staff, and parents are evident in everything she does every day. Betty's a very dedicated employee that shows up ready to give a hundred percent in everything she does. Maryvale, intermediate, very lucky to have Betty working in our school and our district. Congratulations.
No resonating, thank you.
Alright, Mr. Klimzak, for special presentation.
Thank you.
For your recognition, I should say.
Hello. Um, and first off, I want to thank the board and Mr. D'Angelo for all the constant support for the athletic department. Um, we have two groups today that we'd like to recognize on beh- behalf of the athletic department. The first is Dylan Parsons. Come on up. Coach Cooper. So some of the recognition that takes place in the sports in our areas, Channel Four, you can submit athletes that display salary characteristics out there. And that's the whole pool of varsity athletes throughout West New York. And I nominated Dylan and he won, um, last month, right, last month? Yes, the last month, the scholar athlete for Channel Four. Um, and I asked both his coaches, Coach Stavelle to speak on his behalf and Coach Cooper, but right now, Mr. Stavelle's battling East Aurora as the Unified Basketball game, so. Um, so on behalf of Mr. Stavelle, I'd just share some things regarding Dylan. For Mr. Stavelle, Dylan was a three-year varsity starter on the soccer team. This year, he scored 23 goals and led the team. He was a first team All-Star. Um, he's always hardworking, very unselfish, and definitely is one of our real true role models on the field and in the classroom. Um, and as Mr. Stavelle finished up, he said, "He is an outstanding representative of somebody that Maryvale District would look for." Mr. Cooper?
Uh, yeah, to piggyback off that, I would say, you know, Dylan is exactly what every coach dreams of for an athlete on this team. Not only do you not have to work under the classroom, but when he's on the field or on the track with me, you know that he's going to give you his best effort. And he's going to lead by example. Not the loudest kid out there, but he leads quietly and he shows what needs to be done to be successful. Dylan, just to give you a quick story of what kind of athlete he is. Last year, we made it to sectionals for our four-by-one team and during warmups, one of our legends pulled a hamstring. Um, Dylan was there to run the four-by-eight and we asked if he could step in, which was a big task. It's a lot of pressure. Uh, we were ranked number one in sectionals. I didn't know what was going to happen. A lot of students could have easily shied away from that and said, "No, that's just too much, Coach, it's a lot of pressure." To jump in literally minutes before the race and he stepped up, threw his cleats on, did a couple handoff practices, and we ended up winning sectionals last year because of Dylan. Uh, that's the type of kid he is. He's not going to shy away, he's not going to hide in the corner, he's going to step up, he's going to show everyone what he can do. And I look forward to seeing what he does in the future. Congratulations.
Back in March, no, but we, uh, Coach Joanne came in, um, presented to the board about attending a national conference in Orlando, Florida, uh, in March. And luckily enough, she would, they were approved to go. Because as usual, Coach Joanne is one of the most intense coaches we have in our department. Most dedicated coach that we have and most committed to not just her athletes, the school, but definitely the Maryvale community. And today's a perfect example, okay? Uh, our cheerleading team is not in season right now, but she goes above and beyond whatever I ask, whatever we ask, and they're there cheering today for the Unified Basketball team. They're there at an assembly, they're wherever we need pep and cheer, Coach Joanne and the cheerleaders are always there. So it, I know that, um, it's, it's a, they're extremely appreciative of that opportunity to go into that Florida trip and everything else that Coach Joanne does for those kids that she needs to get that approval from, from us. But they went to that national competition in Orlando and they were in a division of 12 teams and they finished first place. They finished, in addition to that, out of the 50 teams that competed in all the divisions in that competition, they had the highest score from the officials. And typically, our Maryvale cheerleading team is very, has a strong reputation around this area and they compete at a national level. That's just a testament to all the girls' hard work that they consistently do, six days a week, all summer, all fall, all winter, and all the hard work that Coach Joanne does. So it's definitely an honor and definitely a great representation of Maryvale Athletics and the commitment that we strive to do at the varsity level. So I want to thank them and congratulate them. For Joanne, I'd just like to say one thing. She's never lost her words.
So, going to Florida was quite, quite the opportunity for these girls. They really, they, to say they took my breath away was, is it just a low way of saying it, I cried. And, um, they were just phenomenal. So, um, you wanna, we'd like to show you a few things that we got here. So if you would come up and show them the trophy. Um, let's see, our division championship, can we roll them down? High point championship, and we actually won a gold paid bid to the one cheer competition, which is a very prestigious competition in San Jose, Ohio, which we couldn't go to because it was like way out of season at that point. Um, and they also won their division jackets, championship jackets. And biggest thing they won is national championship rings, which we didn't even really realize that we got these. And they, lucky for us, they came in time for us to pass them out tonight. Um, so they did great. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts for letting us go. It was a tremendous experience for them. Um, there were international teams from Puerto Rico there. Um, so, you know, they really had a great time, they really did. Um, and one thing we brought back for you is a poster of all the girls. They signed it with a "Thank you," um, it gives you their championship and we'd like to give this to you guys, so. There, there you go. Do you want the banners to display as well? I gotta put the banners in the new gym, so.
I don't remember having that conversation. No more trips.
But I'll be back because we want to go to a cheer camp, so. I'm four weeks, so. Girls, what do you say?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ladies, thank you. What Mr. Clint can accept about you, it really is true. You guys are exemplifying the best of Maryvale, so thank you.
And they're scholar athletes, too.
How do you guys feel?
Alright, you guys want to come outside and get your...
Thank you.
Hi. How are you?
There's seats in the front.
You're on the, you're on the big screen, Josh. Um, while back to the board and commission to study to look into our special education program as a whole, Medicaid billing, transportation, and just the overall, uh, program. And, uh, John McGuire's here, um, Michael and Richard to present the results of that study to the Board of Education. And, um, I know you can't see us, but we can see the, uh, your screen on our big screen and, uh, hopefully, I can, we can hear you, so if you want to start talking, I'll adjust the volume, but I'll turn it over to you, John.
Uh, thank you, gentlemen and ladies, gentlemen and board. We appreciate, uh, the opportunity, firstly and foremost, to partner with Maryvale in doing this important work on behalf of the people who serve. Uh, but also the opportunity to work with your staff in conducting this analysis. Our experience, uh, in interfacing with people at all levels and all different positions in the district was extremely positive. People came to this process, uh, forthrightly, professionally, and really enabled us, uh, to do the best of our work for you. And I'd share with you tonight some of the high points, both in terms of findings and opportunities. Um, and we want to be respectful of your time, so we'll try to look through it expeditiously, but we've also included an opportunity for some dialogue or questions and answers as you see fit. Uh, I'm going to turn to my colleague, Dr. Michael Nyman.
Thanks, John. So, Mr. John, I introduce myself by, uh, just myself, I'm Michael Nyman, also a, um, partner with Alliance Education Associates. Can you see if Richard will agree with us as well? He'll be, uh, presenting on the Medicaid transportation, um, components of the very end. So, again, as John alluded to, the primary purpose of this presentation, uh, for is to, do a few things, want us to review the methodology of the study and kind of talk about how we arrived at the findings, um, just like sort of even search, um, you know, uh, undertaking, there's a methodology that went into it and that's what I'm going to cover, how we arrived with the findings. Um, there's some pertinent information for the tactical purposes as we go through the discussion, when you look at data, what happens in this particular environment, influencer models, John will talk about, um, some of the different, um, continuum of services within mid-districts. Um, with Richard talks about Medicaid transportation, we also have benchmark so we can compare other districts, um, you know, stacks up with other districts. So, uh, we also provide, not just the findings, but also information for tactical purposes. We're providing areas of opportunity with the findings and then provide a forum for discussion within, as John mentioned. We want to be mindful of the time we know, especially in the year, school board generals are jam-packed. Um, so we do want to provide sort of the overview, but then to provide an opportunity again, um, to get certain questions. So the specific areas of review, what we've undertaken in partnership with the district to look at certain areas, these are the specific areas that we're agreed to. Talk about building services, E T, O Ts, teaching language, the major health providers, how the services look, how they contribute to the continuum, what the numbers look like in terms of the equivalent, utilization of paraprofessionals, what does that look like in terms of the delivery system, the numbers, you know, the ways that the paraprofessionals are supporting especially teachers in classrooms. Out of district placements, looking to get a number of students that are, um, outplaced due to C S E not properly placed in certain dispatching, but due to, um, C S E decision-making, what looks like in terms of the, um, demographics of that, is what an expectation. Continuum of district services for students with I E Ps all the way from, again, uh, I C T, straight coaching, to some more intensive classrooms. We also look at utilization structure in district coordination programs, basically that balance between central office and, um, school-based leadership, others supporting special programs. We also have some full-term equivalent numbers to just give an indication about the district, um, areas in terms of the, um, number of administrators in the special education. And then again, the last piece, the findings, is the Medicaid transportation, which Richard talked about. So, when we think about those primary programmatic areas, we can fit nicely to, um, construct some of those organizational considerations, which includes a culture and climate, um, professional development, staffing, then continuum supports, which is more programmatic areas for students. Um, you know, that might distract the likes of students with disabilities by different age quarters, how are they supported through R T I process? And if they need special education, how does the special education program look in terms of that, can you talk about? And again, we'll discuss each of those components, their expected findings, various statistics, and the last part, again, will address Medicaid transportation, which Richard provided somewhere. So, we talked about one of the purposes was to provide a word explanation of why we arrived at these findings. The interviews were a big piece of this. Um, we talked to 70 individuals across central office leadership, so basically, certified general ed and special education teachers, paraprofessionals, and we looked at service providers who support districts programs. So we felt really good, you know, this really, um, when we set up, we introduced, we really wanted to have as many stakeholders, partners as possible and purely that support of by, by that number, which again, we'll bring it out. Um, the questions were catered, interviewed in various, various interests, um, or should I say expertise in areas of review. So the questions we asked principals were different than the questions we asked from the service providers, different ones against, uh, uh, specialized teachers, but they all intersected in a certain, um, certain components like culture, ownership. And then we compared, um, our data analyses to analogous, um, districts within Erie County. So there's a difference, a handful of districts within Erie County with a few, um, that the district, you know, um, is very similar to. So we did a carve-out, what we called an albus, um, school district within Erie County. Because Erie County is so big, within, um, most areas, there's 21 districts, so we wanted to do a deeper dive, um, in terms of those districts that the district, this comparison to. And then documented use of, you know, I E Ps, you know, all confidential, girl student information was ever revealed, and what I mean, this patient report, um, what we thought was, we just didn't have more information to have as well. And then documented, you know, the use of, um, different, uh, you know, documented district providers, important issues come in. So I'd like, uh, John, uh, to talk a little bit about culture and climate.
Thank you, Michael. Um, ladies and gentlemen, as you're well aware, education in the public sector is a people-intensive enterprise and that's why we see culture and climate as such important areas. One of the questions that we asked with interviewees is to what extent do all of the adults in the school or in the district see students with disabilities as their students? Um, and the reason we asked that is you'll recall, special education began as a separate and distinct area of general education. Um, with the, uh, with the evolution of special ed in terms of more inclusionary programming for students with disabilities, more and more people have come in contact, worked with special needs students and collaborated with special, uh, education teachers and related services staff. The perception of interviewees was that the district is working toward a pervasive culture of ownership for all students. Um, they, it was common to hear people say, "We've come a long way since those old days of separate entities." Uh, the trajectory appears positive, all the interviewers continue to appear positive. Uh, so we see this as a, uh, a cause for celebration that, um, the district has indeed come a long way. Uh, and, uh, the majority of people reported to see all students as their students and that that increased opportunity or collaboration across what used to be, uh, a great divide between general ed and special ed is indicating that more and more people are seeing all students as their students. Another of those for celebration, and there were many at Maryvale, uh, is the percentage of students with disabilities who are spending 8% or more of their school days with non-disabled students in the general education program. Mike is going to share with you some detail on the chart on follow-up.
Yes, thanks, John. So you can see, unluckily, I decided it's the most current data and, um, your, the state, um, education department's always a little behind their data, but this was most up-to-date data at the time of, of, uh, great fort. At the year, uh, school year, I think last year, it was, um, about 60% of students, um, with displays were spending at least 80% of their school day with their genit peers in, in general ed classrooms. And we can see that that's an increase of 12.4% from five years before that. So that really suggests really, um, nice growth, as John said, a celebration because it would be very thoughtful to feature the how those inclusionary practices.
So what are some areas of opportunity that arise out of our looking at culture and climate? Um, one of those, and by the way, we talk about opportunities as partners with the district. We don't see ourselves as coming in and trying to, uh, tell the district what you should do, quite contrary. Uh, but we do think there are some things that merit consideration and these opportunities would include creating professional learning communities in each school that involve integration of both special educators and general educators. Uh, one of the indicators around ownership that we just talked about was that ownership appeared very clearly to be highest among those educators who had had the opportunity to engage collaboratively across general and special education. We believe that's a, a consistent trend that we have seen across many of our partner districts and we think it extends to opportunities to collaborate in actual teaching and delivery of services, but also in terms of professional development. And to enhance the education for educational parents, for example, and guardians, um, we would think it would be worthy of your consideration to create opportunities for building principals to take the lead in facilitating building-based meetings of parents, perhaps a C V A D model or what have you. Um, and then the principal would have the role as the instructional leader in each of your schools, um, and having a day in three of your schools. Um, and I can say that there's real opportunity there. We looked also at your committee on special education processes and interviewees and responses, we heard consistently that the C S E was operating on a uniform and consistent basis of participants and stakeholders and clear understandings of what was expected, when it was expected, how the process would play out, what their role would be in that process. There was an expressed desire to have more information available to stakeholders regarding program descriptions, eligibility, exit guidelines, for example. So some areas of opportunity around the C S E. We're going to continue our work in furthering good descriptions that define the various instructional program opportunities on your new district continuum of special ed services, um, and providing consistent frameworks and curriculum as students progress through grade, grade enhancement for school. But also to continue to develop and refine and implement the utilization of eligibility and exit guidelines for those special education instructional programs, for your related services, paraprofessional supports, anti-testing accommodations and modifications. Um, it's, in the best interest of everyone involved in the process, if there are consistent, um, understandings about eligibility and exit and consistent application of those understandings, we want to be sure, for example, that once a student is identified and brought into special services, special programs, or instructional related services, um, that we never lose sight of the goal, which is that that student becomes increasingly independent, hopefully to the point of no longer needing those supports. In terms of central office considerations, um, professional development has been seen as readily available in areas of special focus within the district. Um, not surprising to us because we encountered this quite often. Uh, there was a consistently expressed desire for yet more professional development on current and emerging topics, um, in, uh, the field. Um, it was the consensus among the interviewees that we met that the district is doing a good job of providing sufficient instructional materials, resources, and technologies to support the teaching and learning process. Um, in our experience, we did look at the central office, uh, capacity for administration, special education, and related services, and we found out by comparison to be very leanly staffed. Uh, we would typically expect one administrator for every 150 to 300 identified students. Uh, apparently, at the time of our visit, Maryvale had one, or, uh, over 400 full students. Um, you know, we can talk a little bit, uh, as you wish, about what some of the implications are for being leanly staffed. There's a tendency on all of our boards, I speak as a former superintendent, to say, "Oh, that's great, we're, we're running a good program and we're doing it very leanly." Um, there are hidden costs that we should talk about at some point. Michael. So areas of opportunity would be to bolster central office administrative capacity, which would allow the director greater capacity to oversee programmatic functions at the department. Uh, maybe they want to consider alternative models, whether it be an organizational structure. Um, basically, we've, we've encountered, and this is by no means unique to Maryvale, is that districts are recruiting and retaining quality people in these key leadership positions. When it's leanly staffed, by assessing the attention of the entities of these directors and other administrators, is drawn to maintaining compliance with the mandates applicable to special education. And as you're well aware, uh, special ed is among the most highly regulated and prescribed areas in public education. No district wants to be out of compliance. Directors understand that and they work very hard to keep their districts in compliance with the many requirements of the state regulations and statutes. The cost that I alluded to earlier, the hidden cost, is that this goes to the degree that directors and others are unable to get to the other leadership activities that would mitigate in favor of excellence in the program. So you don't get to do effective visioning, program development, um, and, and all of the other leadership supports to staff that take a very good program from very good to excellent. So, uh, that's why we look very carefully at the organizational structure for administration. Um, another opportunity would be to consider a scope and sequence of a quote-unquote special ed one-on-one, monthly professional learning community, which could be led by a special education administrator or other knowledgeable facilitator.
So again, we talked about staffing to the data. So this chart basically represents the full-time equivalents that were, um, that were, uh, you know, collected at the time of our visit. So we have given the full-time equivalents based on each discipline. A R I is availability ratio. Next, basically, it's the number of staff available to students with disabilities. Um, the expected ratio is based on our work in New York. There's a lot of really nice data that you mentioned at your, at Department of Education. Some of it, there's a lot of data, but there's a lot of data. What doesn't exist is something that we kind of collect just through our, um, you know, organically through our work from New York, that was, you know, about sixty-five districts, is this type of data. So you can actually make comparisons of districts above the expected. So, see, the expected ratio of specialized teachers is ten. So basically, every ten students with disabilities in one district, you would expect one certified special education teacher. Then we have standard deviations to kind of, um, give a range. So it's two districts that have specialized teachers in other disciplines. Um, we do have standard deviations. So we can talk about, um, you know, degrees of staff. So paraprofessionals, um, clearly the A R I twenty point three, it's one of the, the more lead models that John Ida contracted. There were, um, expected ratios like eight point nine with a standard deviation of three point one. So anywhere between, you know, about, um, five, five point eight and about twelve would be the expected range. So you can see there were paraprofessionals. It's really outside the expectation. It's generally good to, um, first of all, you know, with that data, we don't make judgments. We just report, but clearly that, based on our discussion with C S E chairs, that, that district is very thoughtful about not over-prescribing, um, paraprofessional supports. Then we've got speech and language, and, um, we're leanly staffed based on that number. Uh, O T and P T staff, which are contracted right now, or, on the I side, is probably F P Ps. And then behavioral health, which, uh, includes social psychology, social disorders, because there's a lot of disciplines that build supports to social, emotional, learning and mental health. We have combined that as a single entity, C M twenty-five, uh, point three, as well, within expectations for, um, that particular discipline.
So some areas of opportunity related to staffing, uh, the district would be encouraged to revisit systematic district-wide entry and exit criteria for related services, O T, P T, speech, counseling, et cetera. Um, just a, a thought about that, um, where this, this is something that, uh, has implications not only for your students, but for the district at large. Um, in the absence of clearly articulated written guidelines for eligibility and exit from various services, invariably, across different meetings with different participants, you are going to have differential outcomes. Um, issues, uh, this is risky business. You have a lot of variables. Number one, you want first and foremost to be providing appropriate levels of support to students. Remember that it is highly likely for some participants in the C S E to come to the table believing that more is better. The fact of the matter is more isn't necessarily better and in some cases can be detrimental. If we provide a related service to a student that is unnecessary, we are essentially taking away time that could be devoted to construction, which as public school is our primary mission. The other thing is you'd want to be very careful because those differential outcomes can leave the district vulnerable to misinterpretation that there is inequity in the district. Uh, you know, as, as, uh, parents compare adults, say, well, your child got five nights to meet with that service and my child only got two. That's entirely appropriate if you're using consistent guidelines and the levels of need are different across those two students. If it's just a function of different people at the table, all wanting to do the right thing, but coming to different conclusions, it's not a good place to be. Another area specific to parareguator educators, the district may consider adding quantitative parameters for eligibility for paraprofessional supports. Uh, you're obviously doing a very good job based on the staffing reports that we see, um, in terms of, um, being careful about the assignment of paraprofessional supports to students with disabilities. Um, that in my bias as a former director, um, and the C S E chair, um, is a good thing. You do not want to provide services where they're not necessary, particularly paraprofessional supports, because the goal again is for student independence. And it's very easy with an overdose of paraprofessional support to create a dependence. Specific to O T and P T services, if logistics allow and budgets allow and so forth, um, you may want to consider, uh, bringing O T and P T in-house as opposed to having an extender, an external contract. Um, I, that's a bias I have, uh, as a former director and superintendent, um, for a lot of reasons. Uh, I like to have, uh, the people be on our team, uh, and there are other comparative pieces of data that might be in that direction as well.
So the last piece of this sort of initial considerations is the, um, expected shares piece, how much is the district spending? Um, this sort of trend data on special education, um, as a hidden cost for student support, stated something, um, which wasn't terribly hopeful. It used to be a very straightforward report. Um, and then about a few years ago, they changed the reporting structure to break down the different, um, line items for special education, school expenditure, school level O C's, um, central level expenditure, central level O C's, and I, um, again, it's, it's, it's very, um, tough to get one's arms around because it's, it should be, it sounds, but I think, you did the data, you can see that the district, um, in terms of these overall expenditures is spending less, um, than the, the analogous, um, school districts within Mary County, so, so this is a, a district that, um, again, is, and is not spending a lot on special education.
So we're gonna talk a bit about the continuum of supports, uh, for all students, R T I, response to intervention, or multi-tiered systems of support. Um, we look at this even though we've been brought in by you to look at special education because your non-special education supports for students have significant implications for special education. Uh, to the degree that we can meet the needs of a student who is struggling, short of special education, uh, that's, that's, that's a success story for that student. And it also mitigates against, uh, inappropriate or unnecessary referral of a student to the committee on special education. Uh, our findings included that multiple measures were being employed, and student data was compiled and maintained via the Google, Google data dashboard. Um, ownership for your multitude system by general educators was described as making progress. And it was expressed that there's a need to build intervention capacity with teachers at tier one, classroom teachers in a general education program. Let me just say a word about that. Um, virtually every district, and we've been in over three hundred of them at this point, um, that we've worked with, uh, has had their R T I or M T S S as a word in progress. So you're far from alone in that regard. Um, typically, we find that elementary, uh, level is farther ahead than secondary. Um, and that as well, as today, to us as well, at Maryville, uh, that's very, very common. Um, the, the idea of where can we get the most bang for the buck, where, what, how can we improve this program and strengthen its effectiveness for our students, uh, pulling it together so there's inconsistency across schools. Uh, typically, if this was true to a certain extent at Maryville, there are a lot of good people doing a lot of hard work in each of the schools, uh, but they're doing it in isolation from one another. And we pull that together and make it a consistent approach, uh, district-wide. Uh, that's an important piece. Uh, the other piece is classroom teachers will bring a student forward to the committee, the R T I committee, if you will, by whatever name, and say, I've tried everything with this student and I'm just not succeeding. The student is still struggling. What we find is that we probe that a little bit, the teachers are trying what they typically try with their students. They may, in some instances, try a second or even a third approach, but that's where it ends. And there's a way of opportunities for them to expand their intervention options. Uh, and it, it all mitigates toward professional development. So, uh, build a lot of capacity by providing additional focused professional development advice for teachers on intervention strategies within the genit classroom. Um, this year, the position of a strategic aid project was entered in each building, and we applaud it for that. At the primary school, the position included responsibility for R T I collaboration with the principal. Uh, that's an excellent practice. We are to, uh, extend and continue that. The district made a significant investment in professional development for all K kindergarten and first grade teachers. Um, and from a quantitative perspective, special education performance has increased by two percent in the last three years. However, as indicated in the following slide, which Mike is going to explain, the overall percentage of students with high incidence, low means of seventy-two percent comprising learning disability, under health impairment, speech and language impairment is lowering in comparison, uh, to your analogous regional districts and the county.
So again, as John had mentioned before, you know, that, that there's, um, a slight growth in special ed, uh, in the district. But when we look at the next slide, which talks about really the constellation of disabilities within that percentage. This really is, uh, and speaks to all others who are R T I and M T S S, as John mentioned. This really is a number that suggests that students are not being appropriately entitled for special education. So when you think about students with disabilities, there's students with more intensive needs, intellectual disabilities, autism, um, multiple disabilities. These are students that, that have more intensive needs and really just not too much, um, you know, uh, question that the C S E table which they need I E Ps, because these are students with, again, very significant disabilities. And then there's, um, students with more disabilities, um, speech language impairment, other health impairment, which typically is students with intensive challenges. And there can be many things, but typically that's, that's where that is. These are students that, um, are generally, um, you know, are not taking all assessments, they're taking a little bit of exam, um, that are struggling. So when we see a higher percentage of those students as part of the special constellation, it does suggest to us that R T I and M T S S needs significant, um, attention. But in this case, it's the opposite. So again, it suggests that be very, be very mindful about, um, students being classified.
So some areas of opportunity with respect to R T I continuum. As, as referenced previously, we talked about ownership. Ownership for students with disabilities. Now we're gonna talk about ownership for R T I or M T S S. Um, in its inception, R T I was viewed by many educators as a special ed component. The fact is, it is a general education initiative and we're looking to enhance ownership on the part of all general education teachers for the responsibility and ownership of R T I. Once R T I is systematic in operation across all schools, like while before instructional time, the effective intervention, use of data and so forth, it may be reversed. And by reversed, what I mean is this, um, one of the joys of our work is that we very often encounter best practices in the partner districts. We encountered this in one of our partner districts where they, they had their R T I number line so well that they looked at it and said, you know, this was initiated as a preventative to keep students from needing to be referred to special education. Well, put it not where it's a simple mechanism for students coming out of special education, students being, declassified. Um, that's just a brilliant idea and, and there it is right in front of you as you're building it. You can see the, the value load in preventative work for students who are struggling as well as for support to students coming out of special ed, uh, and no wonder with an I E P. Another opportunity is to develop R T I events that are directly accessible to staff across all content areas. These supporting documents can be posted on a curriculum instruction website and service references for staff. And also, uh, to communicate as a community outreach on this important support system. In-district special education programs, um, as you're no doubt aware, the district maintained a continuum of services which included a variety of special education instructional options across all of your schools. Regarding the continuum, interviewees noted wishes for enhancements, ongoing expanded months on our, uh, continuum of services. Some of the ideas included some pushing in on professional therapy, a desire to increase students with disabilities' interaction with their general education peers, or inclusion, if you will, increase the continuum examples such as a fifteen-one classroom. To better meet the needs of all students with disabilities, particularly, quote-unquote, cleaners, those students who need programs that why do you fit in for the current array of offerings? Um, bolster behavioral supports, increase the F T E, social worker in the primary school. These were some thoughts that came out of the interviews with regard to building on the great foundation that you've established in your community services.
So just a, um, a whole data present with number notable, or, or the recording in terms of student achievement. Um, real celebration again is the student cohort with disabilities. There, the number of students or the percentage of students in Maryville, um, had a proficient model in both D L A and math um, is higher than now this, uh, regional school district average. Graduation rates, um, you know, there's a lot, there's about, um, thirteen I E P indicators. Some are more, um, I'd say, um, process-driven like timelines. And then there are a couple like, um, inclusionary numbers, the graduation, that we find to be particularly, say, it really speaks to, um, student achievement and student outcomes. So this one truly, um, you know, this one that we pay a lot of attention to is the graduation rates. And we do it across five years. If it's any given year, the I E P, you know, district that is still, uh, better than expected or not as close as expected, we care to, we want people to be that way. So, um, you can see based upon this that, um, the five-year graduation of students in Maryville with disabilities is, is significantly lower than, um, the analogous school districts. So again, when John talks about various opportunities, this is something that, that we want to, to mention.
So some areas of opportunity, uh, for the in-district special ed programs. Um, we talk in our work about vertical articulation. And I think anyone who is involved in education or any parent who has a child who goes through school understands that transition points, primary to intermediate, intermediate to middle, middle school to high school are stressful and challenging for all students, and particularly so for students and parents of students with disabilities. Um, one of the things that, that we talk with our partners about One of the things that we talk with our partners about is ways of enhancing the effectiveness of the seatlessness that the provision of supports enable that to be less stressful and more effective for students and their parents. One of those ways is to create vertical articulation teams or transition teams. Those at the highest grade level, the sending school interface and the those at the accepting schools entry-level grade. So an eighth-grade middle school team dealing with a freshman team at the high school, that kind of thing. To continue that, to be sure that there is knowledge and awareness of the needs of that student on the part of the receiving school, that supports don't get lost in the process, they keep business and information with regard to that student, are effectively communicated to the best interest of the child. To continue to expand collaborative teaching models, including utilization of related service providers. As a disclaimer, I guess, I would tell you that we are advocates for integrated co-teaching. We're very pleased to see that in your continuum of services. We believe that if that is done well, it becomes a win-win for many, many students, including those who are identified and those who are not. It also becomes a real motivator and a professional growth opportunity for the adult participants in the service delivery, the teacher teams, the related services people, and so forth. Continue to reflect and institute practices that will promote graduation rates for students with disabilities. And that includes a variety of things, from most significantly, looking carefully at the data on the effectiveness of existing pathways to graduation, and also enhancing the array of pathways to graduation, career tech education options and so forth. Out-of-district placements. At the time of our visit, you had eighteen point seven percent of your identified students in out-of-district special education programs. That's within our range of our database, but it's at the high end of that range of fifteen to twenty percent or similar size school districts in our, our work. Consistent with our experience, the majority of your out-of-district students, sixty-six percent, are high-needs, low-incidence disabilities. Students with autism, emotional disabilities, intellectual disabilities. And the majority of your out-of-district place students, about sixty percent, are in grade six or above, which is also consistent with our data in the field. Continue to focus on the requisite personnel, program, physical man capacities to serve students in the district. Your folks with them, me, Matt, are motivated to serve your students in their home schools in the district. We urge you to continue that requirement there of acceptance and advocacy that is in place. Continue to monitor for those cohorts that we're enabling to effectively keep students in and bring students back. So a brief summary, and then we'll get you into Rich's work and the financial end of things. There are so many celebrations at Maryvale, it really was a pleasure, it is a pleasure to be partnering with you. Like narrowing in the achievement gap, inclusionary requirements, assignment of their educators, so many positives. We also identified several opportunities that we've talked about here for struggling, our difficultly able students. We thank for following, and it includes some that might rise to the fore for your consideration. Under organizational considerations, continue to promote that pervasive culture of ownerships for students with disabilities. The school principals taking a lead role. Continue to identify and provide professional development with particular relevance to special education staff. And do that in most instances on an integrative model, which includes both special ed and general ed colleagues. Consider a redesign of the Department of Special Ed and People Personnel Services, Special Education, in order to enable leadership to go beyond a level of compliance maintenance and engage in that visionary kind of leadership. You create, you have a track record of recruiting and retaining very capable people. We want to hopefully see them enabled to bring their skills to that visionary approach. Create and distribute your program descriptions and guidelines for eligibility and exit from the various special ed instructional programs, related services, paralegal professional supports, accommodations and modifications. Be readily available to all stakeholders and see that those are implemented consistently. Continue to, and by the way, you're hearing us use the word continue because your district is already engaged in many of these, and we are pleased and, and so forth of that. Continue to strengthen the unified industry-wide MTSSS initiative with respect to culture, processes and interventions, and redesign of reporting structure. Expand the capacity in terms of continuum services staff and behavioral issues as the example to serve more students within the district. And Rich?
Good evening. First, let me apologize if I start coughing, I'm getting over a cold, but I'll, I'll try to be as brief as I can. If you look at your Medicaid revenue over the last several years, you'll see that the curve is generally in the right direction. Typically, Medicaid revenue transcends fiscal years. What that means is that you, the services are provided in one school year, but the Medicaid revenue is not received until the following year. And so therefore, when we look at Medicaid revenue, we establish a benchmark that's based on a, on a three-year average. And we found that that is a relatively good benchmark to use. And the calculation for that was two hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars as our, as our benchmark. The, the district provided IED access in something one reports indicated, a total of four hundred nineteen classified special ed students with varying disabilities, of which a total of two hundred twenty-five were receiving related services. Of those, a hundred thirteen were found to be Medicaid eligible, which is fifty point two two percent. That number becomes a little more important when we get down the road. One of our assumptions is that all Medicaid eligible students are receiving all of the Medicaid eligible services which are required in their respective individual ed plans. And that those services are all provided by Medicaid certified providers, and that the district has required parental authorizations for all Medicaid eligible students. One of our findings was that the district had about twenty-seven percent of their parental authorizations missing. And obviously, the district was going to, uh, protect through those missing parental authorizations during the year, especially for the next school year. Based on our data and reports provided and our calculated Medicaid eligibility rate of fifty percent, we determined that the total potential Medicaid revenue for all Medicaid eligible services to all Medicaid eligible students is approximately five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. A difference of two hundred ninety-one, almost two hundred ninety-two thousand from the amount received in twenty twenty-three, and a difference of about three hundred forty-seven thousand from its three-year average. And again, one of the factors is that you have some services that are being provided under your IED grant. And when you have Medicaid eligible services being provided to Medicaid eligible students through another federal program, you're precluded from being able to bill Medicaid for those services. Next. We found that varying numbers of between a hundred thirty to a hundred sixty-four students of the two hundred twenty-five were actually being submitted for Medicaid reimbursement on a month-to-month basis. And that the district was only billing for OTPT, speech and language, for a hundred thirty to a hundred sixty-four, depending on the month, and for specialized transportation for only two students. Therefore, our presumption was that this district was not billing for all Medicaid eligible students and for all Medicaid eligible services. However, when we looked at the revenue being received by the district as compared to the billing submissions, our analysis was that the district was receiving over ninety-nine percent of the remittances which were submitted. And that's a relatively high accuracy rate for, for what you're filing, which means that what you're filing for, you're actually getting. Very little that's falling through the cracks. Very few of your businesses are being either denied or withheld, which is, which is a good thing. However, we do have a recommendation that all Medicaid eligible services that are provided to Medicaid eligible students should be submitted for each, for reimbursement in each billing cycle, as opposed to the varying number of students from, from month to month. When we looked at transportation, we looked at both what your contract is and your total transportation cost compared to the district. It's a benchmark that the Department of Education looks at, it's a benchmark that is, looks at industry standard. And what we found is that typically, your transportation budget was about nine point two three percent of your district budget. However, your transportation contract had only increased in average to three point two three percent over the past three years, which is a very modest increase for transportation contracts post-COVID. And when we looked at pulling apart, we found that because of increasing enrollments over the past several years, that the district restructured transportation in order to minimize student ride times. And we found that based on what we saw overall, that the cost is advantageous to the district. School transportation, by the way, when we look at efficiency, it's determined by a number of factors. It's not just the number of students on, on the bus at any particular time. We look at manual versus computerized routing and scheduling. We know that the person who does the routing and scheduling actually determines the number of buses required. We look at student riders scheduled versus actual, which we call student loading. We look at the time availability between schools, starting and ending times, what we call tier times. The distance traveled between schools, population density, numbers of students per mile of bus travel. Highway road, infrastructure, traffic patterns and congestion, especially around the schools during drive time. And not least, the, the community expectations for the quality of service. You know, the community expects short routes and inconvenient bus stops. And we also make a note that morning routes generally drive the number of buses required as more students ride in the morning than in the afternoon, primarily due to students participating in after-school activities. We then pull apart all the routes. You can see the route time analysis, you can see the route time as opposed to your tier time. We look at load capacity. And if we highlight nothing else, if you look at what is in orange, and you look at your load capacity ratio of seventy-three percent, that is a relatively highly efficient ratio. Typically, for a school district of your size and your demographic, we consider seventy-four percent to be highly efficient. And so therefore, based on what we've seen and the parameters of your, your actual routes, we can say that what we see is, is relatively efficient, ordering on the highly efficient side. Next one. We looked at the PM routes, and the PM routes run pretty much the same, seventy-seven, seventy-six point nine capacity. Although your actual loads in the afternoon are a little higher than your bus capacity. In some cases, it's more than two students per seat. But your route time analysis, other than a couple of routes, are well within your, your route time available. Next one. We looked at specialized transportation, much the same. We found what I would say is a relatively high efficiency ratio for special education transportation. And, you know, typically, when we look at capacity, your average load is about six point eight, ordering on seven students per route. Four point seven is generally the benchmark, that's acceptable for specialized transportation, and you're well above that. And your load capacity ratio of sixty-two to sixty-three percent is well above what we see in a lot of districts. And one of the commendations that we would make is that your routing and, and scheduling and routing system recognizes multi-school routing, as opposed to running wagon trains of students to, to single, to single locations. And you have very few singleton routes. By that we mean routes with providing service to just a single student. Next one. Same thing with your PM routes, your, again, your load capacity ratio is fifty-nine to sixty-two percent, relatively high. And so we can certainly say that your specialized transportation is also efficient. Having previously said that your overall transportation is cost-effective, we can pretty much say that the transportation system as a whole is both cost-effective and efficient. One of the things, as I said earlier, is that your contractor annual increase over the past three years was a very modest three point six three percent. And management should be commended for recognizing the value, indexing their future transportation costs to COA, cost of living increases. This allows the district to share the economic risk with the contractor and protects the contractor from having to frontload their, their contract in order to maintain a year-to-year in, in, increase. And that becomes especially true is that they frontload a contract and the future economic conditions that they, they guess in their, their crystal ball, which they do not materialize, because that means that you're paying for it whether it materializes or not. And the result is a contract of mutual benefit to both the district and the contractor. Again, commendation, the management should be commended for being able to maintain some acceptable excess capacity, especially with regard to driver shortages, route configure, reconfiguration, and especially with emergency situations. And again, management should be commended for utilizing multi-school routing and scheduling, thereby minimizing number of vehicles and drivers required, but yet maintaining an extended time, time, time vehicles. One of the things we did find is that it appears that the district has a relatively high percentage of classified students with disabilities being provided specialized transportation. We found that, that, looking at the IEDs, that they may not be medically necessary for all students, as some may be able to ride regular buses, and it's something that the district should ultimately look at at, at some point. We also noted that at a time when economic conditions are with drivers, and especially student drivers, are minimally insured and in some cases uninsured, we note that the district has a fiduciary responsibility to the public to ensure that transportation contractors are adequately insured. And we were waiting to see that, and actually made a commendation, that the contractor is required to provide insurance for both underinsured and uninsured motorists plus a ten million dollar excess liability or umbrella. So overall, I have almost just good things to say about the transportation program. And with regard to Medicaid, I certainly am comfortable that the program is heading in the right direction. It'll be curious to see in July or August, what the fiscal, what the end-of-year Medicaid was for, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. But I would sugge, I would guess that it's, it's probably going to be increased from twenty twenty-three.
Any questions, discussion? No, not at this time. Gentlemen, thank you for your time and for taking a look at our program. I think it's healthy to have an outside perspective on, on our internal operations. And gave us a lot of proof of thought, a lot of reassurance that the things that we're doing are, are making positive implications on our, on our program and our students. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, good night.
Good night.
Michelle, that Medicaid comment. Michelle, that Medicaid comment, I kind of, we kind of looked at each other. It was kind of confusing on the way that he presented it.
Yeah, so he had mentioned, from what I could hear back here, that some of the Medicaid services were being taken out of the six-eleven grant, which I am not sure what he's talking about. The only thing I think it may potentially be, and I'm not sure that's even, it's in there, but it's not a billable service, is we owe a student through a settlement some compensatory services for speech and OT that Buffalo Hearing Speech is providing, but it's not billable because it's after the school year. So that is the only thing that's in there that could potentially be referring to that would be a billable Medicaid reverse service, but it's not because it was after the, I think it was the twenty nineteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty COVID year that services were lost and there was a settlement to provide those, so.
Thank you. Public hearing, we're going to open the public hearing on our budget.
At our last board meeting, the board approved a budget to take to voters in May. Today's the budget hearing will present kind of a summary of what we've been discussing here for months. And I've got a few slides we'll work through. Again, budget goals as they are every year, these have.
Hold on, hold on. Can you make a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I need a motion to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Just making sure.
You're good, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Maybe I'm not good. The budget goals, they don't change, honestly. They're the same things we try to do every year by maintaining core instructional program, academic support for students, facilities, positive learning environment. We want to stay within the tax cap, and so do we also minimize the impact on taxpayers. A summary of the expenditures from year to year. Current year budget is just over fifty-five million, seven hundred thousand. The proposed budget for next year is fifty-nine million, nine forty-five, four ten. It's an increase of four million, four point two million dollars. The administration component or administrative component is up about seventy-four thousand dollars, just a little less than one and a half percent. The capital component is up one point two million dollars. And one, there's a slight change from kind of what we had talked about. And I found out just as the board was adopting the budget that our SRO costs and our security camera costs have new budget codes that the state prescribed for schools to charge those expenses to. Those new budget codes are in the capital section of the budget. We had been for years paying them out of the program section of our budget. So we've moved a little bit of money for those two items out of program and into capital. The big increase in the capital section is just north of eight hundred thousand, I believe, for debt service costs related to our capital project, which will be, and you'll see on the later slide, offset entirely by an increase in building aid. Our program section, again, as I say every year, if you're going to spend money, that's kind of where you want to do it. That's where our students are, and that's up two point nine million dollars. Some of the things that we've just kind of noted here as notable changes. Things that are new, full-time math interventionist at the primary school, an ENL teacher, high school social studies, high school AIS math. And this summer, we're going to run a K-five elementary summer intervention program. Things that our proposed budget maintains. Some of the things that were initiated actually in this current school year that were maintained. Our school monitors at the middle and high school, deans of students, the intermediate middle schools, another ENL teacher, employee assistance program, and our. Questions or comments? When you look at revenues or expenses, you have to have matching revenues. They do have to balance. So there are a few categories here that we've kind of narrowed our different revenue sources down into. Property taxes and state aid are kind of our two biggest. Property taxes will be up four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. That is just below the tax cap. I think we're below tax cap by like forty thousand dollars. The pilot revenue is payment in lieu of taxes. Where businesses don't have their company on a tax roll, they pay a different structure for taxes for a period of time. That is actually increasing about fifty-nine thousand. Sales tax is up about forty-one. Local revenue includes like rental of facilities. We rent significant space to BOS's and classrooms. We have some outside organizations that just rent space. They'll rent the stage, they'll rent the pool. There's interest that we get on our money that's in the bank. There's a variety of things that we just categorized here as local revenue. State aid is up just less than two point nine million dollars. Eight hundred to nine hundred thousand of that is a dollar-for-dollar offset of the increased cost for the capital project. And the bulk of the other is our increase we've talked about in foundation aid for twenty-four, twenty-five. We are appropriating about seven hundred and fifty thousand more dollars in fund balance. I'm going to break up that increase into two sections. About five hundred thousand dollars of that increase is to cover transportation aid on our increased transportation cost from the bid. So we've thrown some money, because we don't get that aid until the following year. So we've got to plug a hole, one-time hole for the year. There's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there for interest related to some court settlements that we had. We borrowed money to pay those off a year ago. And that's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollar interest payment. So again, it's a one-time hit, and which is a good thing. If you're going to utilize fund balance, you don't necessarily want to have to have repeated large increases like that, because you will drain out your fund balance very quickly. So having a couple instances where we know it's either paying a one-time expense or will be offset the following year with increased transportation aid, that's a good thing. Three more revenue categories are just reserves that we've used for years and were able to sustain those moving forward. I didn't change the heading on that slide, I'm realizing. So that is supposed to be twenty-three, twenty-four versus twenty-four, twenty-five. The numbers remain the same, obviously. So there's no changes in our ERS, our TRS, and our workers' comp reserve. Highlights of the revenue section, again, you know, we're within the tax cap. In this particular case, we're actually below the tax cap. The tax cap's at two point zero-eight percent, we're at one point nine-one. And then there's just verbiage that's part of the tax cap to clarify permissible exclusions and things that are just part of that formula as prescribed by law. We have two things that our community, we're asking them to vote on. We're asking them to come and vote on Proposition One, which is the approval of our twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And we're asking them to vote for a board member. There's a board member election, two individuals wanting for one five-year term, James McDermott and Mike Mason. If the budget's defeated and we end up having to go to a contingency budget, then the tax levy, the tax increase must remain flat. So on the revenue slide, you would have noticed taxes were up four hundred and thirty-six thousand, six eighty-eight. If the budget's defeated, you can do it twice. If it's ultimately voted down twice, we would have to cut four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars out of the budget, which in essence would eliminate those new programs and things we'd seen on the notable. Change the slide. Our budget vote is Tuesday, the twenty-first, from noon to nine in our Benner Gym. I just want to pass the word, you know, as long as people come out and vote, that's what we're after. You know, sometimes turnout is light. Love to have everybody actually come out and vote. That'd be kind of a weird thing for us. But I think it's important for the community to come out and share their opinion on the vote for our budget and board members. So please pass that word. Yes, that is my last slide. Any questions, comments, or from the audience as well? It's a public hearing, technically to not just be a report or presentation to the board.
I have something to say, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
It's budget-related. My name's Juan Herryo, I'm a resident of the Maryvale School System, been so for over thirty-two years. I run a small community group called Dick Urban Community Association. I'm sure a lot of you know Reverend Rick. One year ago, our community was traumatized by the failures of the current political leaders, whereas lack of control of our southern border allowed for illegals to cross our border to a better way of life. Without knowing what they were doing, these politicians introduced these illegals to our community where they were, where we've seen sexual assault, fights in hotels, vandalism of our community. But Mark Polinkars and Assemblywoman Monica Wallace promised us support. We'll fast-forward to this budget. And now, Mark Polinkars and Monica Wallace have the nerve to argue with people on this board concerning these issues after they have failed us. We have children in the district that have no idea where all these kids came from. They didn't see them in our stores, our parks, our streets, or places of worship in our community. They appeared. The trauma of our children will not be measurable for years, just like COVID. But here comes the budget. I was expecting a hung dinner rate increase, and I applaud you in doing a good job, even while taking shots from Mark Polinkars and Assemblywoman Monica Wallace's office. We will get paid by New York City. We will get paid by New York City. I want you to remember that. I want everybody in our community to remember that come November, because we're not being paid by New York City, are we? We had to do all this on our own, and you guys had to figure out a way, and I applaud you for that. I want you to think of our children, what services had to be adjusted or changed because of this past year. I myself will not forget how many people have faced us to live differently due to their inadequacies and the inability to keep the promise that they made to us a year ago. Thank you for your time.
I did remember two notes I'd written down and kind of skipped over. I just want to point out that they're important to our vote. This budget in the capital section includes yet another capital outlay project. We include them in the budget, and that you can do up to a hundred thousand dollars worth of work. We're going to again focus on some cabinetry, sink work and things in the classrooms at the primary school again this coming year. And then structuring it that way, you can get the building aid that exact same year. You don't have to wait fifteen years like you would for large projects. And lastly, again, with transportation, having bid transportation, this budget, approval of this budget would include a five-year contract with a new bus company, Western New York Bus, I'll bid, in this case, for a student, or incumbent. So we would, with approval of this budget, sign a five-year contract with Western New York Bus for those runs, as it stands today. So I just, those are comments I wanted to make sure I clarified during the hearing.
Just as, anybody seen anything good on the news this week? The people around this table and in this room and in our classroom, we have just a few simple goals every year. We want to give the most to our kids. First and foremost, we want to give the best experience that we can to our kids. We want to be responsible to our taxpayers. And I think, you know, we found a way to do that. We worked hard to deliver a budget that's under the tax cap while still providing for our kids. And we want to provide the most accurate information possible to our community. And there were a few politicians that chose to speak up this week. They didn't need to, but they chose to speak up this week, which is their right. But the issue that I have with it is I don't want any politician or any public servant, there is a distinction, by the way, between, for me, a politician and a public servant. I'll call them politicians. I don't want any politician to erode the trust that we have with our community. I want our community to be able to trust that what we tell them is the truth. And it is. We have no incentive to lie or mislead. We're going to tell you exactly the way it is. And I know that they'll see this, because they watch our board meetings. So I'm going to say this directly to them. I'll say it again. You both have my phone number. If you really wanted to know what was going on and what we spent, you could have picked up the phone and called me. But you chose to go through the media, which I guess is fine for you. But I don't want anybody eroding the trust that I feel that we have with our community. And you're not going to push Maryvale around, not while we're here. So if you have anything to say, you could call me. If you ask nicely, I might tell you what we spent. If you don't want to do it that way, you could foil it. There's our foil officer over here. But what we told our community is the truth. And we were promised money from New York City, and we've yet to see it. One of the politicians said we received a quarter of a million dollars, which is a pretty big mistake to make, my thinking. But again, that could have been remedied by picking up the phone, which tells me they're really not interested in learning the facts. They want to create some kind of narrative out there in the public. But again, I don't want anything to happen that erodes the trust that we have with our community. Our community supports us, they trust us. And when people are out there in the news saying that we're not telling the truth, that bothers me. And again, you're not going to push us around. What we told the public is the truth. We believe that New York City should be responsible for the entire impact of the asylum seekers in our district. And let me just say this again. We love, I love the asylum seekers. The kids are fantastic, we love them. Not about the kids. I've said from day one that these children have enriched our district, and they have. So it's not about the children. It's about the expenditure of the money that we were forced to make because of political choices. So the expenditure went, as soon as we found out that they could potentially be here into the next school year, we started to take a look at what is our total cost going to be. And that's a number that we've been giving folks. Eight hundred thousand dollars, nearly eight hundred thousand dollars is what the total cost would be this year and next year. Sweet Home got a similar amount of asylum-seeking students. Now, they're a district of about a thousand more, eleven hundred more students than we are. They didn't hire any staff, we did. And that is the difference between the cost in the two districts. But again, that is something else that these politicians could have found out had they picked up the phone. So I want our community, I want the community to just know that what you hear from us is the truth. And we're willing to open up our books and show anybody anything. All you have to do is ask.
If we have no other questions or comments, I would need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
All in favor? Code of conduct.
I bet you've got you, you're doing this much sooner in the evening.
I know I didn't.
Window's caved.
Yeah, it's saying available displays and being a little mind. I think it's thinking about.
Technical dysfunctions, is he?
Sure.
I wonder if I can show it online.
Because I shared it with you earlier, right?
Hold on, hold on, let me log in.
Let me try again.
Mr. D'Angelo, hold on, I'll touch his screen. Listen, I don't, you don't need to know how many letters, how many characters it is.
Well, Mr. D'Angelo's pulling that up, we did hold two meetings, we had stakeholders from all four buildings.
Oh, there it is, there it is.
Alright, thank you very much. The first meeting, I, I purposely did it virtual and in the evening to make sure that parents, if students had games or practices or anything after school, that they would still be able to sign on, that they could sign that from home.
Mr. Frank, hold on one second, can you open the public hearing for the Code of Conduct?
Sure. Can we have a motion to open the public hearing on the Code of Conduct? All in favor? Mr. Frank?
I, I do want to give kudos to the students that were on the committee, they ranged from sixth grade all the way up through high school. They were extremely respectful, they demonstrated active listening skills, were able to listen and repeat back what other people had said. And just very mature and respectful in their answers, so, you know, kudos to our students. I'm going to try and be brief, I know other people have said this before, but I'm going to try. A lot of what we are adding here is really examples on what already is existing. So we're not adding a lot of new language per se. So for example, when we look at inappropriate signs of affection, we're actually putting in examples of hugging, kissing, other sexual acts, things of that nature, so we're adding specifics onto those. Same with like the vape and the death pens, that shows up in a couple different sections within the Code of Conduct. Those are relatively newer things that are popping up more and more. You know, we used to have E-cigs on there, well, you know, vape is like the, the, the main term, so we're making sure that we include that. Speaking of which, obviously marijuana cannabis has been somewhat legalized in New York. And so we wanted to put some language in here that specifies that even though it might be legal in certain aspects of the state, it is still not permitted on school grounds, or allowed to be used by our students. And in fact, it is still illegal for our students, because they're under twenty-one, to be in possession or, or use cannabis products. This, I, I actually think this might have came up several years ago, the dietary supplements. And when I talk about dietary supplements, I'm not talking about like a protein powder. I'm talking about the pills and the capsules that are flooding the market right now. We really don't know what's in them, we don't know if a student's taking a vitamin, or if they're taking some other kind of drug. If a student for some reason does have a medical condition in which they need to take a supplement, they can still submit a doctor's note and a note from their parent, and, and go through the health office through our, our regular means of dispensing medications. And just to give you one example here, if, let's take something as silly as gummy bears. I could put five on the table right here in front of you. One of them being candy, one could be a multivitamin, one could be a weight loss gummy, one could be with THC, and another one with CBD, and you wouldn't be able to tell the difference between any of the five of them. Right, and, and so this is something that, we just don't want to put our staff in a position where they might have to, oh, is that a vitamin or a supplement, or is this a drug? And something that could have a detrimental effect on students. And also the other aspect is that they are not governed by any agency as far as like the FDA or anything like that either. Any questions on that, because that's, I feel like can be a little bit of a...
What, what you're saying is very true, but the example you use of gummy bear. I know the kids eat gummy bears, does that mean we're no longer, no longer able to eat gummy bears? Because it could be cannabis, it could be...
Yeah, how far do you go with, right? I, I, we were really looking more at like the, you know, not used to that as an example, but like the pill form. So, you know, I know in the wintertime I take vitamin D, I take vitamin C, I take zinc. I put all three of those on the table, I can't tell the difference between them, and I don't know, can't tell the difference between that and, and, you know, other...
I'm agreeing with you on this, I just...
Yeah.
I'm not sure, it seems like a bit of a slope that is going to lead to something that's going to bring some outrage at some point.
I, I would agree, and, and you know, I bring up the gummy bears because we did recently have an incident of gummy bears in, in that school, so... You know, we're, we're just really trying to protect our, our students as much as possible. Yeah, and I, I agree with you, you know, the, the state laws and the way things can be marketed to our youth has not really caught up with where the industry is right now. Twenty-seven other motorized vehicles, you know, it, it's... In our Code of Conduct currently just says vehicles, I don't want someone to come in and say, oh, no, this is a four-wheeler, it's not a vehicle. You know, because it's not a passenger vehicle or something of that extent. So we really wanted to expand that so that anyone driving any kind of motorized equipment within the district in, in an unsafe way can be held at home. And then thirty is actually something new adding into it. Having one, one person in a bathroom stall at a time. Especially, you know, when we talk about vaping, that happens a lot, where kids will meet up and they'll share a vape in the bathroom, something like that. We have said in our meetings with students and put out there that there's only one student allowed in a stall at a time. However, then when it does happen, it basically comes under insubordination and could be argued that, hey, this isn't in your Code of Conduct, no, and for me, I can't do this. So this, this spells it out and is clear. Alright, this is the big one. And this is one that, you know, thank you, Mr. D'Angelo, for reaching out to some of his contacts, and I did the same as well as Mr. Smith, our MTA president, did the same thing, artificial intelligence. This is pretty new on our landscape in the world of academia. We have had numerous students, both in the middle school and the high school, I know specifically, who have used artificial intelligence to write essays and then turn them into their own. So that, in those conditions, we, we have kind of put it under plagiarism, but it's technically really not plagiarism. So we wanted something that captured AI, and, and here's the other part of AI, is that there are legitimate and condoned uses for artificial intelligence that we also wanted to make sure that we captured in here. So the language is kind of extensive, it was actually about, was that Grand Island, I think that came from, I think? And so they really went through and actually explained what some of the acceptable uses of AI can be, and then also what's prohibited, uses of AI. Any questions on that, because that was pretty lengthy? We also wanted to update just some of the language, you know, penalties kind of sounds a little bit more negative. And we wanted to say consequences, or even more importantly, corrective actions. You know, the idea is not to penalize students, but to correct the behavior. To, to make them better students, better citizens. And make sure that they're, they're going to be productive members of our society going forward. And we also wanted to add in restorative practices, this is something that the district has invested in, that our administrators and our teachers have invested in, and we wanted to make sure it was incorporated into our Code of Conduct. And this last part, I just wanted to specify that they, there's a part in our Code of Conduct that talks about police being able to be involved in searches and interrogations or investigations within the school. And it basically, there, there's like three levels of criteria in which this is permissible. The first is if the police have a search warrant or an arrest warrant. We don't really have any control over that, we have to, you know, allow the police on campus if they have that. The second is if a crime is committed on school grounds or at a school function. Okay, so that would be basically, you know, maybe someone damaged property, or took drugs or something on school grounds. That, that would allow the police to come on and do their investigation, or potentially search a student. And the last one where the question really came up is that invited by an administrator. You know, and that, I think, is where things get a little gray and questionable. And I spent some time talking to Officer Cook Fair about this, and we're trying to go back and forth of how this might come into play. I want to first say that our Code of Conduct does not supersede any law, any district policy, any judicial police policy, or our Constitution of the United States. The police do need probable cause to search any student, I can't give them permission to search. They need probable cause to do that. As an administrator, we have something called reasonable suspicion. So for example, if a student comes into school and says, hey, you know, I saw Johnny on, on the, on the bus with a knife, I didn't actually see it, they reported this to me. That gives me reasonable suspicion to search the person and to search the backpack in the lockers. The police would need a higher threshold for that, I believe you would need to see like camera footage of, of that knife, or you would need to actually see the knife itself or something like that to conduct that search. Interrogation is just such a heavy word, in my opinion. Something that's an interrogation would not happen generally on school grounds. That is something that would take place in the police station. And probably by an investigator or a detective of some sort, wouldn't even be, you know, our SRO or a road officer. As far as a formal investigation, again, in most cases, unless there is imminent threat to safety or harm, the police still need approval from, or consent from a parent in order to conduct that investigation and question a student. So none of that goes away with, with this in the Code of Conduct. So then we're starting to think, okay, well, where does this come into play? And I, I can think of kind of two examples, that Officer Cook Fair and I spent some time on. One, for example, is we had a student who committed arson at a local store, and then came immediately from that store onto school grounds. The police were looking into it, they have the student on camera, they know who it was. They asked us if they could come in and search this student and potentially arrest the student if they're found with, with the, with the materials. So that is one example where we could say, in theory, no. You, you can't come on, you're not allowed to steal on school grounds. On the police side of it, I think that's a situation where if they don't have this, have the individual with the stolen property, it makes it very difficult for them to make a case. Okay, and so that was, and now they're in possession of stolen property on school grounds, is the other potential issue there. Another example we thought about is if we're at an off-campus function, say prom or something like that, and we suspect someone may have driven or is going to drive while they're under the influence, for example. That would be something where we would have to call the police and invite them in. Technically, a crime has not been committed yet, and therefore they want to meet the first two criteria laid out in our current language. So this would be something that we would invite them in to ensure their safety. Yeah, yeah, that's actually all we have, that was one thing, so we're not, the committee's not recommending that be changed. However, obviously, that is up to, you know, the board to make that decision.
Any questions, comments?
So this public, this public hearing that you've opened will remain open for thirty days, and we'll ask the board to consider adopting the Code of Con, how the Fed revised it, as you...
Is, is this still open for public comment? I don't want to put you on the spot.
That's okay, I'm used to it.
Yeah, I know you are. But considering everything's happened the last two weeks, at college campuses, not saying it can't happen at our campuses. Just like our district, the school districts, as far as any kind of violent or, you know, I'm sure everybody knows what I'm talking about. About Palestinian, okay? If they start doing this, do you have to call the police in? Who, the board or superintendent would have to call, they have to invite the police in? Or what, what would you do in this situation?
Well, I don't think we'd have to do anything, because Officer Cook Fair is here, and is our full-time SRO. He, he saw any violence or any criminal activity, that's, that's what he's here for.
Okay. Because when we saw on TV as schools just letting them do what they wanted to do, and they never called the police in until they started breaking windows and actually getting into the buildings.
Yeah, so if a crime was committed, right, on school grounds, that, you know, the police would have the ability to come on, on campus. Prior to that crime being committed, they would have to be invited on. But, you know, again, we have a full-time SRO with Officer Cook Fair, so, you know, we would, I think, lean on that to make that call between administration and Officer Cook Fair.
Okay, so if they want to protest, they have to protest outside the district, out, the sidewalks outside the district, like a Murrayvale Drive or something.
Students, students have the right to, to voice their opinion and, and to peacefully protest. They do have that right.
In this area? In, within the school perimeter?
Yeah.
Okay. What happens if they're not our students?
Then you trespass again.
Yeah, it's...
Because that's if they're fighting out now, or wasn't, in, in UV, it was fifteen students got arrested, ten of them were not even from the district from there, and five were.
Yeah, they'd be trespassing.
Okay, but who would call the police in for that?
Probably Officer Cook Fair.
You would do it? Okay, good, thank you.
Great, you know, thank you, Mr. Frank.
Alright, I recommend the board approve the financial non-personnel consent agenda items one through four as submitted.
Do we have a... Do we have a motion?
I'll motion.
And the second. All in favor?
I recommend the board approve the personnel consent agenda items one through eight as submitted.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you.
Recommend the board approve the track invitational payments as presented.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Alright.
Recommend the board approve the surplus of textbooks and manuals as presented.
Do we have a motion?
I'll motion.
And the second. All in favor?
Alright.
I recommend the board approve the policy updates and deletions as presented.
I'll motion.
Do we have a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Student liaison.
Wait, oh?
Oh, wait, oh, oh, oh. Try.
Are you walking on it, I don't want to interrupt this? Do that before it will pass out.
That's why you don't want to stop. Do we have a motion to approve the contract as provided?
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Opposed?
I recommend the board approve the second reading of the policy updates as presented.
I'll motion.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Alright.
Student liaison.
Hello, been a while, I didn't know I'd been busy.
How'd you guys do?
That, it was their senior night, so we just had, you know, we had to let them win, you know?
That was nice of you.
Yeah, right, I mean, they gave us flowers and everything. They gave the seniors on R team flowers too.
That was nice.
That's never happened before. I will get into my business. So right now, in the primary, we have the one mural going up of the Pegasus, which is the mural that I am doing in the primary. It is their first Pegasus in the primary, and I'm pretty sure it's a Pegasus, if I'm correct. That was a student...
That was Rick.
I don't think so. Um, yeah, that's going along pretty well, um, that was softball coming to an end, I'll be able to get back into it and hopefully finish it pretty soon. There's also more, not new murals, but we are fixing the... There's also more, not new murals, but we are fixing the, all of the like kind characteristics animals that are in the cafeteria. Georgia Byer will be repainting all of those in the cafeteria so that they are no longer like cut off. It's the full animal.
They look great, by the way. And, you know, there's a lot of murals going up around the high school too that students are doing.
Yep.
They look really nice.
And then the primary school continues to have their policy meetings twice a month, continue awarding all of their students who are exhibiting the good character traits. Last month, four more classes earned the golden spatula and lunch in the VIP seating area with Miss Hada. Each student has, four more students earned bus rider of the month for earning tickets while being safe and responsible on the bus. Each of those students get their picture taken, and it's displayed on the big bus in the hallway. And at the pause assembly, they have been honoring three staff members who are exhibiting safe time and responsible behavior, as well, just like all the students. Math night on April 25th with the high school seniors, NHS student ambassadors, and Chitoa, the guests, was a great success, an experience for all of the kids. The Maryville art show is coming up on May 21st from six to eight in the Maryville High School wing. It'll have art from all of the different levels in the district, and also will be now featuring alumni that Mr. Root has contacted, who will be showing their art, and hopefully some of them who are still local will be showing up to be there as well. And recently, we had an art collaboration between Miss Roll's second grade art students and some of the high school students, which is actually out in the hallway, where those kids drew their own self-portraits, and any of the high school students who wanted to were able to draw a background based on what the kid was wearing. I am currently working on one, the one that I think is out there. My kid was wearing a Buffalo Bill jersey, specifically Josh Allen. So I gave him a little portrait of Josh Allen and Billy the Buffalo right behind him. We also have the NHS induction ceremony coming up on May 22nd for all the new members for next year. The. Culture Day is coming up, where the high school students will be able to dress in any of their cultural wear that they have. And during all the lunch party, there will be fun activities for all of the students there as well. For the seniors, we have prom coming up on May 31st, and then the 50-day batch coming up on May 16th. And that, I think, is everything.
Yes.
And that's everything I have.
Do you have any, like, plan to extend the murals, like the middle school and the intermediate school?
I know when I originally went into my COVID year, when COVID originally happened and we got the two-week break, we were, there were plans to have the National Art Honors of Students come in and collaborate with the middle school students to do more murals in the middle school, but I don't know anything about that as of right now. Nothing has been brought up in any of our meetings, but that is something I can always bring up to Mr. Root and ask him about.
How about you two? Since the principals are here, how do you think about like murals going up at your school?
Yeah, we actually, just before COVID, we actually tried to get that going. I honestly put a little bit of a hold on it just because of the capital project that's gonna be coming in next year. They're gonna be doing, there's some various graphics and striping and repainting. I didn't want to put anything up that could affect that. So I think anything we would do, we would need to make sure that we can kind of isolate it from those graphics and striping and through the capital project. But I would absolutely welcome it and love it because we have long hallways that are very boring.
And it's the same for the intermediate. We would definitely welcome it. We would love to do something like that. But we're getting the graphics as well, so it would just be determining what areas, wouldn't be getting anything.
Awesome.
Yeah, love that.
I think, I think the intermediate spring concert, the 21st too?
Yeah.
In conjunction with the art show and everything?
And our celebration of learning is this Thursday.
In the budget book?
I forget what day, but there is the high school spring concert coming up. I need to know that. I am in that concert, so. It's coming up.
It is the 29th.
It's the 29th. I knew that.
The 22nd is the primary art and ice cream social.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Erie County Association Delegate Assembly is Thursday? Are you, you're delegate, right? Because you're legislative.
Um, I didn't get the call for that yet, but I probably won't be able to make it.
Okay.
Telephone's wrestling, can't.
Who's the author for that?
I am.
Thank you. Can you vote?
Legislative breakfast is Saturday. Annual dinner is June 6th. If you haven't let Shina know about that, please do. That's all that I have for Erie County. I don't know if you have anything to?
Not, not really. I mean, at the legislative meeting, there was some talk about the new foundation aid formula coming out in '25, '26. And they gave us a resolution kit, so we could look at that if we were to make any resolutions. I can share that with everybody. Sure.
Jen, what did they generally say about the foundation aid?
They just generally said that it's coming out '25, '26, and that they really are, you know, it's gonna affect everybody differently. So they don't know. I mean.
We're all keeping our eye on it because as we know, foundation aid is the basic operating aid for school districts.
Right.
You know, they're, the formula that has been running the past few years, and prior to that, it wasn't running. It's based on 20-year-old data. So the data that they updated, you just have to make sure, it should be advantageous for Maryvale unless the formula is, you know, warped in some way or manipulated in some way. But we're just keeping our eye on that to make sure that the formula accurately represents the needs of the district. We won't know.
Thank you. New York State school boards, anything? Any resident input?
Yeah, of course there is. Last Monday night, I was, I was very pleased to go to the board meetings with all four districts. And just to see where we are as a district, you know, we're leaders. I don't see anybody else talking about senior volunteers. I don't see anybody else talking about gold cards for the senior population. I hear nothing about the other districts. So I want to thank you for that, but I do want to thank you for standing up to our politicians. They are not civil servants. They're not serving us. They're serving themselves. And what was in the paper, what was on TV was nauseating. And for poll counters to say that all he did, the guy in New York City, that's his friend, he did a favor for him, and he didn't tell anybody, and he thought he can get away with it. No, we're ending up paying for it, and it's not right. Thank you for fighting. You're not only fighting for the district, but you're fighting for us as the residents and the seniors in there who are on fixed income, who are hurting right now. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Anybody else? With that, next board meeting is Monday, June 10th at 6:00 PM. Do we have a motion to close the meeting? All in favor? Thank you all for coming.